Okay. Good evening, everyone. At 7:00 PM, I will open tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board of Tuesday, May 10th, 2022, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody here and on Zoom for tonight's meeting and on TV. Okay, now the formality of the evening. In accordance with the requirements of the Open Meeting Law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the conclusion of the meeting. If you would like to participate remotely in tonight's meeting and you have a smartphone, a computer, or a tablet, you can do so by using the Zoom application. Tonight's webinar ID is 909-174-0347. If you would like to participate but don't have any of those devices or don't have access to one but have access to a telephone, you can dial, excuse me, 888-475-4499. And again, the webinar ID is 909-174-0347. The posted agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at tonight's meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the Open Meeting Law. I will open up tonight's meeting and ask if there's any public comment from the board.
I have none.
None.
No.
And no from... Well, I will have one. I want to thank everybody who attended the annual town meeting on Saturday, everybody who made it possible, you know, everybody from the Town Clerk's Office, the Town Moderator, the Town Manager, the Finance Director, all the people at the school, all the people at the IT. It's a big event to have happen. And I want to thank the close to 200 people we had there for most of the meeting, and all the articles were gotten through. We cleared the agenda and what was it, tolls? Like 3:15? 3:15, I think it was, around there?
3:20.
3:20. Okay. So I must have missed those five minutes. Anyway, we did get through everything, and I want to thank everybody for participating and for all those people who spoke and voted. And I think the meeting went well as far as, you know, procedurally, and everything was discussed, and I don't think anybody was cut off. So all in all, a good meeting. Any public comment from the public? Mr. Skolimbrini.
My name is Anthony Skolimbrini, and I live at Five Valley Road in Lunenburg. And I am here to make public comment about the annual town meeting and the special town meetings. I've now had the opportunity to attend three of those gatherings, and I find them to be of great value as a citizen of this community. Having come from out of state to Lunenburg, I can tell you that there is no such thing as a town meeting format or citizen input like you have here in New England and specifically in Lunenburg. So my comments are about what you have as item number one under current business, and that is the review of annual town meeting articles and any required follow-up. So my comments will be addressing the town meeting format and the citizen input that comes to that. I do believe clearly that town meetings have great value, and I think everything should be done to make sure that citizens' voices can be heard, they can be heard in a timely manner. I am concerned about town meetings that stretch through the better part of a day. I think that's a huge time commitment, and time management, I think, is always an issue. But the other thing that I noticed is that there's a huge amount of citizen input that leads up to the publishing of the warrants that are going to be voted on at town meeting. And I spent a lot of time looking at the Lunenburg website, and I look at all the different ways that citizen input can come forward, you know, that help generate those articles that come before the town for a vote. And this also has no equal in places like Ohio where I came from. There's a huge amount of opportunities for citizens to come forward before a town meeting and say, this is what I want my elected officials to do. And I think that that's a really critical piece. It creates a very powerful agenda for town actions. And I think sometimes folks who, you know, who grew up in the town, who've been here for a long time, they may not see it that way. And I'm just here to emphasize the fact that that citizen input really has brought a lot of great agenda items for the town to vote on as a whole. I do have some concerns. At the very top of the list, my number one concern are amendments that are offered at town meeting. Now, I don't know all that I probably should know about town meeting format, the town bylaws that affect the amendment process, but I'm here to tell you, I think that it is wrong for someone to produce or to suggest an amendment without really giving it a thorough vetting, because the warrants that are on the agenda for discussion and votes, they all have generally been fairly well-vetted. You know, for someone to get up and make an amendment kind of off the cuff, I think that's a dangerous thing to do, and it could negate a lot of good citizen input that has come before that amendment is made. So at the very top of the list, my concern is to say, maybe the amendment process needs to be looked at again and make sure that when amendments come to the town meeting, that they're really worthy of being considered by the folks who've made that time commitment, not just to attend the meeting, but the time commitment associated with all the citizens who have participated and the numerous boards and commissions that this town has. I'm also concerned about the capital project list, and I did address this at the town meeting. I read through all of those projects, and I was familiar, very familiar with a couple of those projects. And my concern is that we need to make sure that all of those capital projects are thoroughly vetted. Now, you know, I know that there is a time constraint with regards to when the warrant booklet has to be produced and when you have to approve those items that come, but I would certainly urge that, you know, that the Select Board do its best job of making sure that all of those capital items are thoroughly vetted. And I completely disagree with the idea of there being a vote-by-vote for each one of those capital items, because I think that if you had that happen, the town meeting... Going back to one of my earlier comments, is that you are asking citizens to invest a fair amount of time in attending an annual town meeting or a special town meeting. And if you open up capital projects to a lot of debate and a lot of discussion, that meeting's going to become a two-day meeting, or you're not going to have people stick around. And then the last thing that I'm going to address is the electronic balloting that took place. That's a great way. That's a great way of doing it. I applaud the Select Board for investing in the equipment, and I hope that that continues. But from here on out, there's no fudging on quorum. You know, the clicker will decide whether you have 50 people there. I thought it was... I love the town moderator. I think he does a great job. And I know that he's probably dealt with quorums in the past, especially for meetings that, you know, go past 3 o'clock, you know, if you start at 9:00, you're well under the day. And I loved how he said, "Are you challenging the quorum?" You know, because there's a specific process by which he then has to say, "How many people are here?" Well, those days are gone. The clicker is going to decide whether there's a quorum. And had the one issue associated with wellhead protection been earlier in the morning, that room cleared out after that very contentious issue, you know, went. And had that happened earlier in the morning, you might have really had a hard time having a quorum at 1:00 or 2:00. And I think one of the reasons why folks stayed after that large exodus took place was because they knew that we really were close to the end. But if you have that mass exodus on a contentious issue take place earlier in the day, the clicker is going to tell you, you don't have a quorum at 1:00. So those are my comments. Once again, I think that this is a great process. I really enjoy being a part of the town's debate about issues, and I look forward to continuing to participate in that process. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. I will comment on some of your comments, if I may.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. Yep. I'll take them in reverse or whatever. I'm not going to comment on all of them. I will say that there are logistic reasons why, although it seems self-evident that the clickers would be the use of the quorum, there's no requirement that everybody on every vote has to vote. So you can't use the clickers because not everybody may vote. And in fact, for this, this is the first time we're using the electronic ones, as you know, and there was no abstain, like you couldn't use the abstain button either. So there would need to be a challenge, because again, not everybody voting does not mean there's not a quorum there. It just means that not everybody voted. I want to share with you, it was nice seeing through your eyes or hearing through your experience. That was my experience, you know, when I moved up from Long Island many years ago up to Massachusetts, and I didn't get involved where I was first living in Stowe, Mass. But when I got here in Lunenburg, so for the last, you know, since '98, so almost 24 years, it was very exciting that you could have a direct voice, and it was really a great experience, and I thought the same thing. So it was nice seeing that. I'm so glad that you've gotten involved. I'm so glad you were there, participated, and, yeah, the amendment process can get messy, but it is probably like one of the rooted pieces of town meeting time, which is what runs or operates our town meeting. So there's always a trade-off for efficiency and people's ability to speak, so... But I really appreciate all your comments.
Thank you.
You may.
Yeah, I just want to echo that too with the clicker idea. I mean, you would only know that a quorum is there if more than 50 people voted, but I won't belabor that point. I totally concur with your assessment. I love the town meeting format, although sometimes it is a real pain because you get a different composition of people that show up, or if there's a contentious issue, the pitchforks and the torches come out. But the... But I came from New Jersey, so where, you know, everything was... You elected your officials, and they did it, everything, and everything was decided by them and occasionally the mob. But...
Yeah, we all saw The Sopranos.
But also, it's not entirely an accident that contentious issues are put near the end. They make people wait for after the commercial break, so anyway.
I will comment that actually that, it was not known to us, because I work with the Town Manager on organizing the articles, that that was going to be. It wasn't until after the warrant was published that that became... That's why the selectmen did not defer, because we didn't think there was any argument, and that's why we recommended approval. However, there have been cases, you noted, that if you put something of substance at the beginning, you'll lose a quorum, and believe me, that has happened. I want to make one final comment that I meant to make about the clickers. Not only were they faster, and you didn't have to listen to people try to outshout each other, but one of the things that I think is a maybe unforeseen good byproduct is that every vote is a secret vote. So you don't have to look to see how your neighbor is voting and feel kind of intimidated or feel pressured by your peers that you're voting a different way. And I think that gives us, I think, a truer accounting of the vote, so...
There are also no votes, which usually is unanimous for many things and not many others.
Oh, yes, I did like some of the no votes. Some of the no votes were 194 to 3, or something like that. Except reports or something. Something like that. All right. Announcements. We have one... I'm announcing this?
The license?
Yes.
Okay, so I have one official announcement, and that is the notice of available off-premise retail wine and malt license from the local licensing authority. Per the Select Board Policies and Procedures, Article 4, Regulatory, Section 4.01, Liquor Licenses, Section 1, General Licensing Rules for Licensees, Subsection 1.21, Applications and Fees of the Select Board, Notices being provided of an available wine and malt off-premise license, Section 15, in the town of Lunenburg. For more information about this open license, please contact the Select Board Office at Please note, the Licensing Authority will not accept any new applications for this license until 30 days, June 6, after such notification has been made, published, and posted. So we are letting people know, if you are interested in that license, you have until then to let us know about it, and then we will start addressing the applications and making a selection if there are more than one. Any other announcements?
Just that the annual town election is May 21st, voting at the TC Passio's building. And absentee ballots are now available at the Town Clerk's Office. And the last day and hour to vote absentee is Friday, May 20th, at noon.
Excellent.
So they'll be open that day.
Okay, appointments. 7:05, a toll booth fundraiser request for May 21st, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM for the Lunenburg Boys and Girls Club with a rain date of June 11th. Mr. Geno.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Gary Geno. I am Chairman of the Board of Directors for the Lunenburg Boys and Girls Club. We're requesting, we submitted some paperwork, to have a voluntary toll also on May 21st with a rain date of June 11th, and we're requesting permission.
And this is one of your annual...
Annual fundraisers. With the pandemic, you know, it's been a couple of years since we've actually been able to do a toll, so we're looking to get back into it and start raising money for the club again.
Just for people who may not know, so you know all the rules, you've done these before with the organization?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
I have none.
I don't have any questions. I have a general comment, though. I just, I support this. That's not the issue at all. I'm going by recollection, is not the skateboard crew doing one in around this same time, too? The skateboard park?
I believe that was June...
I don't think it's the same day.
No, I know. It's definitely not the same day. That I know.
I believe it was the following week or the two weeks after that. I know the dates were kind of, we had put them out there, and we were advised that there was another one that was to be had, but not on the same date.
Okay. My only concern is just in general, like, you know, we have to treat every one of these that come before us with the same treatment and fairly, and... But, you know, people might start getting toll booth fatigue, but I guess that's the people collecting that have to worry about that.
Our normal process is we'll do it usually twice a year. We do a spring one, then we do a fall one. Our purpose is fundraising, and it also puts our faces into the community, and that's kind of a big thing, because this little white house over here, people sometimes drive by and have no idea what it is. They just see a bunch of kids out there. We want people to know we have open houses for 5th graders and stuff coming into the club, and, you know, with our names and faces out there, and we wear the shirts and the vests and everything, people knows us, and they're like, you know, they see the name of the Boys and Girls Club, and it tends to make them want to support us. And, you know, we're only here for the kids. That's our purpose, to give the kids a safe place to be.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, no, I wasn't challenging the worthiness of your group. Not at all.
It doesn't say, but I'm assuming this is right here on...
It'll be right in the Senate, yep.
Only one location, you're not going to be down a whail, right?
No, no, just a single location. We stopped doing the dual locations many years.
Just want to make sure this is not...
Yeah. I just want to opine that I love the Hua shirt you have on.
Yeah.
Do you spend some time at Sand Hill yourself?
I spent some time in Fort Campbell, Kentucky.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And in the wonderful red clay of Georgia.
Yeah, I went to basic at Benning.
Yeah.
All right. No questions.
All right, any further questions? I would entertain a motion regarding the request for the toll booth fundraiser of May 21st, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM in Town Center for the Lunenburg Boys and Girls Club with a rain date of June 11th.
I move to approve the toll booth fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club of Lunenburg, May 21st, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM with a rain date of June 11th.
Second.
Any further discussion? All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Please remind me when it is with an email, and I will gladly help out.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, ratification. We have a meeting at 7:45. Okay, that's okay. All right, so ratification of the Town Manager's appointment. Do you have any order you want to do these?
The DPW Director first, please.
Okay, DPW Director, William Bernard.
Yes.
It's all yours, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Board. So tonight, I'm asking the Board to ratify my appointment of Mr. Bill Bernard as our next DPW Director. Bill has his Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from UMass Lowell and has 30 years of experience as an engineer from Mass DOT District 4. Mr. Bernard started his career there as the Assistant Resident Engineer, working on all highway maintenance responsibilities, and worked his way up to the Civil Engineer 5 level as the Structures Maintenance Engineer, managing a $10 million annual budget for bridge repairs. Mr. Bernard has years of experience of managing employees, writing bid specifications, cost estimating, and project management, and his references described him as conscientious, intelligent, easygoing, and great with developing and managing contracts. So with all his experience and qualifications and good references, I'm asking the Board to ratify my appointment tonight.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Certainly.
And say whether you agree with all that?
Yes, my name is Bill Bernard, as Heather said.
All right, that's a good start.
And she did accurately describe my work history. Yes, and I'm looking forward to working here with the town of Lunenburg to bring my talents and my experience and, you know, keep the roads and bridges and infrastructure in good shape for many years to come.
Excellent. Any questions from the Board?
I have none. None.
I have comments. So Lunenburg, as you know, or as you may have learned during this process, is a wonderful community. And I think that you may have noticed before the meeting, certainly, I think there's good camaraderie, certainly on this board, but also, I think, across the town. We also have a lot of faith and confidence in our Town Manager, who I personally think is an excellent leader and a really good Town Manager on every level, every metric. So certainly, I think that once you are on board, I will definitely be looking to meet with you probably after you get settled in, you know, after a couple of weeks of getting settled in, but certainly welcome aboard and thank you for your interest in our town.
Thank you very much, and I look forward to meeting with you.
Excellent.
I will say that probably during your interview process and everything, like any DPW, with its broad spectrum of departments under there and lots of stuff to be done, but it would be good to get settled in before you get addressing those, as I'm sure they will happen probably faster than you'd want. But it is nice to see you here. It's nice to get the recommendation from the Town Manager to put a face to the name. And when does...
You're expected to start Monday, correct?
Monday, yes.
Oh, quick.
Sounds great. If anybody has no further questions or comments, we can... I'll entertain a motion on the ratification of Mr. Bernard as the DPW Director.
I move to ratify the Town Manager's appointment of William Bernard to the position of DPW Director.
Second.
Any further discussion? All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? It's unanimous.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard. Congratulations.
Thank you much.
And we look forward to you starting on Monday.
Yes, I look forward to being there.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bill.
And I just want to wish you the very best of luck with your meeting with Mr. Bernard.
I'm sure he'll be nice the first time.
Meet him early in the week.
Nice to meet you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, the ratification of the Town Manager's appointment of the Conservation Administrator Nadia Madden.
Okay. Ms. Madden...
We have Ms. Madden on Zoom.
Yes.
Hi, thanks for having me join you tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. I'm going to let the Town Manager introduce you, and then you'll have a chance to introduce yourself.
Thank you. So I'm asking the Board to ratify Nadia Madden tonight as the next Conservation Administrator. Our current Conservation Administrator is retiring on May 31st. This will give an opportunity for Nadia to work for a couple of weeks with Matt Marrow before he leaves. So that's great to have that little bit of overlap to catch Nadia up on the current things going on before the commission, and she's had a chance to watch commission meetings as well, so, and read through minutes and see their format and their style. So, you know, she's looking forward to that. And I'll tell you a little bit about her background. She has her Bachelor's of Science in Earth and Planetary Sciences from MIT and her Master's in Water Resource Management from the University of New Hampshire. She has three years of conservation experience with the town of Shirley as their Conservation Agent and four years serving on the Groton Conservation Commission. She has many years of experience with customer service, including supervisory and working in an independent setting. And her references described her as pleasant, reliable, knowledgeable, and a good communicator. So I'm asking the Board to ratify my appointment based on her experience, her skills, and her good references.
Excellent. I would open it up to... Oh, no, first, I'm going to ask you, Nadia, to introduce yourself.
Hi, nice to meet all of you. I'm really looking forward to hopefully joining the town.
Excellent. Where had you worked before your application here?
I think my most recent longer job was with Partners in Health doing contact tracing during the pandemic, and then I've been doing an administrative job for the last six months. I was looking for, in Cambridge, was looking for something a little closer to home.
Which is where?
Groton.
Okay, yes, that, this would be a little closer and probably a better traffic pattern.
Yeah, to the office from my house, so that's much appreciated.
I'll open it up to the Board if anybody has any questions for Ms. Madden.
I have no questions, just welcome to Lunenburg. I think similar to our last appointment, the DPW Director, the Conservation Commission is also very popular with the townspeople, and you'll be sure to get a lot of input from folks. So welcome and good luck.
Can you guess which one of these members has served on the Conservation Commission?
Surely you, right?
No, I think the world of it. I just wouldn't, I wouldn't have said it in those glowing terms of Mr. Dwyer.
It's a job I do really enjoy. You know, I've worked it, I volunteered for the commission in various roles, and protecting our water resources is really important. Lunenburg is a beautiful town, so I'm looking forward to helping out.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else on the Board? Mr. Franco?
I have nothing.
Mr. Jeffries?
No, no questions. Thank you.
I will say also, too, in advance of our vote, which we haven't had yet, to welcome you to Lunenburg too, you know, Matt's been with us forever, and he's, I think he's a founding father of Lunenburg almost, but...
Big shoes to fill.
But I know, I'm very glad, I am very glad for the overlap in the handoff, that there's nothing, there's nothing that really makes a smooth transition like that. So I'm sure that, you know, Mr. Bernard wished he had that kind of handoff, but he doesn't, but I'm glad you do. So I would entertain a motion regarding the Town Manager's, ratification of the Town Manager's appointment of the Conservation Administrator Nadia Madden.
I move to approve the Town Manager's appointment of Conservation Administrator Nadia Madden.
For a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? It is unanimous. And when is, when is Ms. Madden starting?
Next week as well.
All right. Wow. It's going to be a busy first day of school week. Well, welcome aboard, and good luck to both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nadia.
Okay, go to Town Manager Report.
And we do understand if you guys leave, by the way.
He's not asking you to leave. He's just acknowledging. Okay.
All right, I will start out with the existing vacancies. There is one vacancy on the Economic Development Committee. That's a person recommended by the Open Space Committee. One regular member vacancy and two associate vacancies on the Green Communities Committee, although we did receive an application today.
Yes, I was going to say, we just got one today.
So boiling this list down. Historical Commission, one vacancy, and anyone... And anyone interested in these positions can find the form on the town website, complete it, and return it to the SLIC Boards Office. And any questions on these opportunities, you can call the office at 978-582-4130, extension 144. Current employment opportunities with the town. We have a library page position. It's a part-time, non-benefited position. Heavy equipment operators, full-time benefitted positions, the DPW. Seasonal lifeguards, non-benefited positions. A production technician for cable access is a part-time benefitted position. Van driver, which is a part-time, non-benefited position. And videographers, which is a part-time, non-benefited position. More information on each of these positions can be found on the town website under Employment Opportunities, and that will tell you how you can apply. Just to denote, one that came off the list as well, that's not through the Board, is the digital service librarian. That position has been filled. So Francesco is, so that is done through the library director. Update on Flat Hill Road Culvert Project. We received notification today that our community project funding request for the supplemental funding for Flat Hill Road Culvert did not make the Appropriations Committee with the US Congresswoman Lori Trahan's office. So this does not have the potential of being funded this year by the federal government. Just to note, we also do have a small bridge grant application in for this project that's pending before Mast D O T, and we expect to hear something in June on that application. Department head updates. From the police, the civilian traffic unit employees are busy with, there are many details around town. The department has their accreditation site visit scheduled for July. So that's a culmination of many years of work to apply for accreditation. So, and that's done by many people in the department besides the chief that work towards that. So congratulations to them on their pending accreditation. For public access, the project with the A student is going very well, and they're still searching for the production assistant and videographers. The treasurer collector is working on updating the tailings, as we just did the tailings policy, and quarterly taxes were due on May 2nd. From IT, a portion of the network equipment is in, and they'll be working to do installation of that equipment, working with our network administrator. And a review of all the, sorry, the email migration for employees is currently going through different phases of groups of employees being migrated to Microsoft Office 365. And we're going to review all the licenses that we have against employees, and the next phase will be boards and commissions. So that's more information to be coming on that after we do a full review of all the employee licenses, so we can make sure we have enough licenses overall. From the assessors, the data collection being conducted by Vision is finishing this week, and the principal assessor is working on supplemental assessments as well right now. Council on Aging, their participation rates are way up. They're currently also waiting on MART to complete the process before a new van driver can begin. And there's currently no transportation on Mondays due to not having a driver on Mondays. For land use, Uma Flowers has filed their special permit, and that hearing is scheduled for May 23rd. The Planning Board has also reached out to various boards, including the SLIC Board, on having a workshop to discuss the potential impacts and possible mitigation measures related to the expansion of water in sewer. That is being proposed by the Pondview Commons Project. So if that were to happen, what are some potential economic development opportunities if that were to occur? I think that's the goal. And I think the Land Use Director is also going to work with Town Council on doing another 40B workshop to go over, review the process as well. For other meetings and events, I already denoted the absentee ballots are now available, and last day for that is May 20th at noon through the Town Clerk's Office. Yard Waste Collection Days at Young's Road are Saturdays now until May 21st, and the collection is open 8:00 AM until 4:00 PM. The Lunenburg Farmers Market will start Sunday, June 12th, and that is every Sunday until Sunday, September 25th. And the band concerts are on the following days, July 11th, July 18th, July 25th, August 1st, August 8th, and a rain date, if any of those dates are canceled, will be on August 15th. And they are once again to be held on the TC Passio's building, the lawn in front of the front entrance.
And their quaintness is only second, only to town meeting. So the quaintness of town band concerts are really fun, and they really are enjoyable, and they really do a good job each, each week. So something to look forward to.
And one other thing that's in my written report, and I'm bringing up, and it's not just for Bill's benefit because he's here, I didn't think he'd still be here, just, I wanted to highlight the DPW and all the work that they're doing right now with no director. I know I forwarded one email regarding town cleanup project and how much help the administrative assistant, Sam Lennox, was for that to occur. She coordinated all the materials and pick up for the student that led that. And meeting today with the Highway Superintendent, I had an opportunity to talk to him about all the pavings going on, and it's so evident how conscientious he is about the work he does for the town and how much he loves the town. So I think we're really fortunate to have that crew.
I want to echo that and also say that while we've had, you know, a vacancy in the directorship, we, and now that we filled that tonight, please be patient, and we ask people to be patient as, as, you know, Mr. Bernard ramps up and gets used to everything. So don't everything to be, you know, he's not going to know everything about everything in like one day or one week. So please be patient as we do that, because it is going to take some time for him to get up to speed. And I know those people that the town manager just mentioned will keep everybody apprised in what they're doing already to make sure things are continuing in a positive way. So thank you for sharing that, and please, you know, for myself and on behalf of the Board, please thank them all for the work they've been doing. Any questions for the town manager on the report? Okay. Okay, current business. Review of annual town meeting articles and any required follow-up. This is the catch-all. Hey, I'll just go down and see if anybody would like to talk about anything about town meeting, and the articles and.
Did you have?
I don't.
I, I, I mean, overall, I think it went well. I was a little disappointing for the 30 School Street project, but the other thing is too, on that waivers, on the sewer commission thing, I, that is still bothering me, the way that went down. So at some point, I would like to bring that up and seek another amendment at a special town meeting.
Well, for that, I would urge you to talk to the sewer commission and word it with them. I mean, it's easy enough to do if it's, you know, minor changes.
Okay.
Or even if it's major changes. I mean, I would just discuss it with them.
Okay. Yep, thank you. That's all.
I, I thought that town manager did a great job as far as the preparation that was done to get us to that point, Heather, the way that you formatted the meeting in terms of the slide presentation. I thought it was really professional, really, really stellar on your part. So thank you for that. I know it's a lot of work for a lot of time that goes into it, and it really showed. So I think that was a good, really good, really good presentation from the town. I thought that the meeting overall was long, but I also, as Mr. Franco noted, I thought that there was really good discussion that happened. I thought it was a really good meeting overall. Takeaways, 30 School Street surprised me. I thought that that was going to be a very simple pass. It was consistent with what the survey results were that we conducted, that we had multiple public meetings, you know, there were low attendance on those. The reach outs was all really consistent. I don't think there were any red flags leading up to town meeting that would have suggested that that was not a shoo-in pass. So that was rather surprising. And I think that it changes in some ways, I think it's going to affect the Municipal Building Design Committee, because what we heard was that, I think my expectation going into the meeting was that, that we finalize the disposition for that property. And what we heard as far as the reason why people didn't support it was that they wanted that property to be in play when it comes to a future town hall. Even though I do not see how that's really feasible, I think that it's something that we now, on the Municipal Building Design Committee, we're going to have to talk about to see if that's something that can be explored. But that was rather, that was rather surprising. That was, that was something I think I still need to digest a little bit, 30 School Street. And then, and I know that there's going to be more conversation at our upcoming Municipal Building Design Committee meeting about that, and certainly won't be affect immediately, but perhaps in a couple of months when we're in the programming phase, that might come up. Otherwise, though, I mean, I don't, the planning articles, I think, are always tough because they're difficult, they're a lot of information, it's very specific. It seemed as if a lot of residents were concerned about the existing bylaw more than, more than the proposed changes. I'm sure that clearly the proposed changes were concerning, but what we heard a lot was complaints and concerns about what was already in place. So, and I also share some concerns, as Mrs. Scullen-Bridy mentioned. And I think that amendments on the floor are fortunately or unfortunately the nature of town meeting, and that that is kind of the intent, and it is difficult and rough to get through. But I think that is, that is expected. But I think that perhaps this year was a little choppier than usual. So, but otherwise, I thought it was a successful meeting, a lot of participation. I don't think I've seen that many people in one meeting in a couple of years. So it was a very high participation rate, and overall went well.
Thank you. My own reflection on it was, I'll start with the easier one, which was the one about the redistrict, the what a district mapping that caused a lot of concern by people on the lake. And what I'm really interested in, and I think Mr. Jeffries just noted it, is that it turns out that the concerns that they had had nothing officially to do with the article, because the article didn't change the Zone One area. And I'm interested how that's going to be reconciled, because that map and that zone has been around for 13 years, I believe, since 2009. And it was not caught by anybody before. So it'll be interesting to see how some of the opponents to the article, of the article, they had some interesting amendments and things they'd like to put into the current map and designations. So it'd be interesting to see how they work with the Land Use Director and all the appropriate boards and bodies to do that. So that was kind of surprising, and I do think it was interesting that it wasn't really about that article. That article just triggered someone looking at it and seeing something that's been existing unbeknownst to people for, you know, that length of time. As for 30 School Street, of course, it was a huge disappointment, because I think, as I said then, as I will say now, I think it's just going to start the merry-go-round yet again, and I thought we had gotten past that. And I'm not sure that, I mean, the amendment to reduce the funding and not do the design work was very close, and I'm not sure that the difference between 18 people out of a body of 180 speaks what the town would want to do. And that's always the trick about town meeting. As Mr. Franco said earlier in tonight's meeting, the dynamic and the demographic of each individual town meeting changes depending on what's on the warrant and who shows up and what the weather is like, and if seniors can come or they can't come, or if people have things to do with their children. So my initial response is that I think for the special town meeting, we put a standalone article for that design money one last time and let people vote down that they don't want to see a design for anything of this landscape architect's project that we have been working hard to do. I would say that if we put it on then, and it fails then, then I don't know where we, I'll be very honest, I don't know where we go, because everything else that people brought up there has been discussed at one town meeting or another over the past six years, and we're just going to start the whole cycle again. So I'm hoping that we can get enough impetus to get this current project over the line, but I think it's worth one more chance. But that's my initial feelings. Now, we're six months away from a special town meeting, and we'll see what people come up with then. Other than that, I think it was, I didn't think it was, you know, from historical perspective, I didn't think it was particularly long. I think that's what you should expect from town meeting. Amendments are part of town meeting, and in fact, that's, that's the power of being a town meeting. Not only that you can vote, if you couldn't change anything, then you would just be there to vote yes or no on things. And while some of the amendments get into the weeds sometimes, I would certainly agree with that. In the end, I think that people had their say, and for the most part, I think things went well and were orderly. There were things that spun a little eccentrically at different points in the meeting, but overall, I think it went well, and I'm glad that people did stay and come for that. That was, as Mr. Jeffrey said, probably the most attended, consistently attended town meeting, not that people came in for an article and left in a long time. So, which is scary to say at 180, but I still have hopes that at some point we'll get like 300 or 400. That could be a pipe dream, I don't know. Okay, did you have any?
No, Mr. McCormick, I think, is waiting in the hallway.
Okay, Mr. McCormick, or McCormack. You didn't, you didn't have to wait outside. That okay? Gotcha. Okay, so senior project request from John McCormack of 49 Williams Drive. Please come to the microphone, please, with all your, whatever you need to do to tell us about your project. So first introduce yourself and then write to the project.
Firstly, my name is John McCormick. I'm a high school senior at Lunenburg, graduating very soon. I plan on going to Connecticut College to major in biology, and hopefully then attend grad school to become a veterinarian. So basically, the senior project idea, you're pretty much allowed to really do anything. I chose to try to incorporate some of my interests in school as well as in my extracurriculars. So specifically speaking, I would like to attempt to publish an array of geocaches within the town center of Lunenburg. I also prepared a little pamphlet, I guess, for everyone, if it's okay if I.
Yes, please.
Just so I can kind of run through.
Just hand me all of them, we'll just pass them down. Thank you.
Thank you.
So within this, it pretty much outlines a little bit of what geocaching is. I don't know if everyone here is aware of it. I will go over it, as well as where I would like to place these and so on. So I'll start getting into it. Firstly, I'll start on the first page, what is geocaching? So geocaching is an online scavenger hunt game that's pretty much been around since the early 2000s. It originated out of a small group of people who published 75 of these caches, and then it's, it's eventually evolved into a more global thing with over 3 million caches worldwide in 190 countries. So pretty much, to specify a little more, geocaching utilizes an app or GPS device to send you to a specific location to find a physical container. And within the container contains a paper called a, like a logbook, where you sign your username and the date to show that you found it, and then you go back on either the official geocaching website or the app that you can download on iOS, Apple phones, and confirm that you found it, or let's say you went to the location, weren't able to find it, would say you didn't find, hadn't found it, and so on. So I guess my idea behind this is I would like to publish an array of them within the town center. In order to do that, however, I was just hoping to seek proper permission to do so. I guess the gist of geocaching in general is it's kind of like a scavenger hunt game, and I guess I'll move forward from there. So I guess on the next page, I'll talk a little bit about my history.
Is this like Pokemon Go?
Sorry?
Is this like Pokemon Go?
Not really. I guess it's kind of similar in the fact that it uses an app, but it's more, it has more of a foundation behind it, and it's been around for quite a longer period of time. So just to give a brief history, I've been geocaching for 10 years this year. I have 150 finds, and I've found them all over the East Coast, all the way down to Costa Rica, all the way up to Canada. way down to Costa Rica, all the way up to Canada. So it is very popular around the world. The community surrounding geocaching is also, um, pretty awesome. I've met other people while actually trying to find them before, and, um, overall, my experiences have really, uh, been really great. Um, the app itself is actually pretty versatile. I included a, kind of a cool little photo here, um, that shows some of the mile markers of just some of the caches I've found. All right, so I'll move on to the next page where I kinda talk about the reasons why I really enjoy geocaching and why it's actually stuck around, um, with, with some of the things I do, um, for, for the past ten years. So it's very easy to find geocaches, all you have to do is load up the app, and, um, something that I'll do frequently is if I'm just in somewhere that I am not normally in, if I'm at a rest stop, if I'm in the city by some sort of, I don't know, thing where I think there might be a geocache, I can just load up the app on my phone, see if there are any, and if there is one, I can find it fairly easily. Um, you can also filter by specific geocaches because, um, you can, uh, when you publish a geocache, you can tailor it to the specific difficulty and terrain that is required to find said cache. So for instance, if I'm putting one out in the mountains, it's obviously gonna be a lot harder to find versus one that's, you know, in the center of town. So that's kind of cool only because it makes it fairly accessible for all people, all ages, whatever, and, um, and that's useful. I also really like geocaching because I can implement it into a lot of my everyday extracurriculars activities and so on. So I'm really big into mountain biking, and I have found that while out on the trails and out, um, specifically up in like the Pearl Hills State Park, um, there are some littered around on the trails so that while I'm biking, I can, you know, open the app real quick, see a couple, and then go and attempt to find them. And then finally, I can involve my friends and family with it, and, um, I actually have been doing it with my dad for most of the time, and, um, just recently I obtained my license, where now I'm kind of able to do it on my own and whatever and, and so on, which is, um, cool because it, it just makes it a little more accessible. And then it also just gets me outside and fosters creativity. It's, it's, I've, I've made a bunch of the little containers before without publishing them, and it's just, it's fun, and, um, it's all around a, a really great time. So if you flip to the next page, um, the next three specific pages outline the locations in which I would like to place caches within the town. Um, so what I tried to do is I constructed, um, I guess, a little mock-up. I went onto the Massachusetts property, um, I guess, border website and took screenshots of all the locations I was hoping to put caches just to show, um, you all that the caches that I hope to place are on town property, which, um, the little white boxes are also just to show that the owner of the specific land that I hope to place the caches, um, is owned by the town. So for instance, the first cache I'd like to place is on the stop sign over by the Ritter Memorial Building. Um, I have an example of what it would be right here, um, just a little pill bottle like this, and in the bottom I have a, um, a magnet hot glued so that it will stick up on the inside of the stop sign. So this, um, would be categorized as a fairly small cache because you also, um, document the size of the cache on the website itself so people can kinda know what they're getting into, as well, um, the difficulty and terrain would both be very low because it's in a fairly accessible location, close to the sidewalk, close to the old Ritter Building. The next one that I was hoping to publish was on the, um, solar panel by the Veterans' Memorial. I was hoping to put it far enough out where I wasn't being disrespectful or disrespecting what the, um, memorial was built for, but also to help bring people to the memorial and to remember the fallen soldiers that it was built to remember. Um, so I'll move on to the next page where I document the third cache that I'd like to place, which is on another stop sign down by the gazebo, which I also thought was a fairly accessible area. Um, another thing to note about the placement of geocaches is they have to be around five hundred feet apart from each other just so that there isn't too much overlap. So, um, I tried to put it far enough away where it was still fairly central within the town and central to some of the more interesting things in the town like the gazebo, but, um, also not, not too close to some of the other things. And then the final cache that I would like to place, oh, before I move on, um, the other stop sign cache would also look like this, and, um, this, and then the one within the solar panel would look like this. All of the caches have the official geocaching logo in them, as well as information to direct people who don't really know what it is or who find it and stumble cor- and ask, um, stumble across it accidentally to the official geocaching website where they can learn a little bit more about it. Um, I'll kinda show you what's inside this one at least. So this is just a, um, a magnetic key holder, you could say, and inside I have the logbook, a little note directing you to the website if you find it by accident, and a pen so you can sign your name. And then finally, I'll move on to the last one, which I would like to put down by the old pond, um, not only because it has a lot of historical value to it, but also because, um, I thought it was a pretty interesting spot and it, I feel like it could warrant a cache, and I would put this, um, camouflage container that has the official geocaching stamp on it. Um, inside, I'll just show you, I have a little, another little pill bottle, and another thing, I guess, within the geocaching is the, um, the concept of swag, which is little things that you leave inside the caches and can, um, I guess, leave behind and/or take something from and leave something of the same value behind, kinda just like a little trading system. So in this, I have like a couple little Legos and like a cool rock, and then obviously, um, and a sticker, cause why not, and, um, the logbook. So that is pretty much what all the caches physically look like. And then, um, I believe after this, I'm kind of going a little more in depth, and you can also see pictures of the caches with the logos on them overall. And then that is about where I'd conclude, um, with this, and then I guess final remarks in regards. Um, publishing the geocaches itself, it's not an extremely formalized process. Um, I'm simply responsible for obtaining the proper permission to place them in places if I, you know, would like to. And so I, I guess I'm, what I'm asking from you is, you know, verbal and or written permission to do so on top of, um, I guess, yeah, just overall permission. It's not like I need to submit some sort of formalized document or anything, I'm just responsible for getting either a yes or a no.
So in cache number four, you don't indicate where you're looking to put it.
In the stone wall?
Uh, sorry, um, the idea would be behind-
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see the dark gray arrow, sorry. Okay, there you go, okay.
Yeah, I didn't wanna put it in the stone wall simply because it is a historic feature and I wouldn't want people to be messing with in the rocks.
Right.
Um, another thing that you can do on the app itself is provide a hint for people to find it, so I could provide a hint allocating people to the sign so that they don't mess with the rocks and, you know, mess with the historical value.
Yeah, I would probably say that, yeah.
Absolutely.
You don't wanna put it in the stone wall.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I have friends who do this and it's, it's very interesting. My only, so I'm, you know, for the most part, in favor of it. I only have one question and it's not a question I can answer, and that is because stop signs are, are placed by law enforcement, I have to know that there's no regulations against putting things on or in them and attracting people to them, you know, for that purpose. That's the only question I have. As far as the town properties that you mentioned, the solar panels and, and the last one by the, by the Marshall Pond, uh, I'm perfectly fine with that. It's just that stop the two stop signs.
Yeah, sure. So based off of previous experiences, I've found a majority of some within stop signs. Um, I could do further research and make sure that there isn't a problem with that. I could contact the police department, maybe talk to them about that.
Yes, yes.
Um, and if they're okay with it, then maybe go through with those, um, at a later date. However, um, if I need to then readjust the locations, I could, um, come back and go through you guys again with, um, I guess, redetermined locations for at least those two.
Yes, well, I would, what I would recommend is that you part, correspond with the police department and then have them respond to you and to the town manager.
Okay.
With, if they are okay with it or not, and then we can, I mean, we could take two of them tonight, I don't, I mean, or we could take all four of them tomorrow, next week, really up to the board. I'll, I'll open it up to questions from the rest of the board.
Well, just to comment, I believe, um, you have approximately eight days left in school.
Uh, yes.
Yes. So, uh, I, I think whatever we do, we wanna make sure it's done quickly, so I think we could possibly provisionally approve all four, uh, provided that the, uh, uh, police department, um, signs off on, on the locations tonight.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm, I'm glad to see that school hasn't changed much since I went to school, so you, you're coming to us with eight days to do this, that's excellent. But yeah, I mean, I, I'm with, I'm Mr. Dwyer, I, I'm fine with that. I mean, it's, I, I don't think it's gonna be, cause a great commotion, uh, one way or another, and if we find out after the fact, we can let you know.
Yeah, yeah, and then removing caches to-
I, I would still say, we, we can provisionally do this. I would still say that to contact, it would be a good project for you, part of this project.
Absolutely, yeah.
To contact the, the police department and ask them if there's any regulations that would prevent this.
Sure, absolutely.
With the select's permission.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I was gonna suggest that, um, anyways, just so the police department is aware what items are at each location in case they get calls for strange items that people who don't know what geocaching is.
Sure.
That's a good point, that's a good point. You should probably tell them all four.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I was gonna bring up the same point about the police department. Do we think the police department is the only department that would be applicable here though? Like, um, I mean, is DPW involved in this too? Like the stop, you're saying the police, the stop signs are placed by the police department?
Well, they're public, they're, they're publicly enforced and they're asked for by this, by the police department.
Right, but who, I mean-
They're physically installed by the DPW, but-
We can include the DPW as well, make sure.
Yeah, okay, I guess, I just wanna make sure all the boxes are checked, you know, that all the right, build the right department.
We're gonna ask you this.
Oh, yeah. So, but I, I know, I know what this is too, and I remember it was really big, and it was so big that even like my wife and all the people at work, at her work, were doing it, and so I got dragged along to do it and I kinda liked it. My son was into it, he's about the same age as you are actually, graduating as well right now, so, um, uh, so, yeah, no, I, 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 I like this. That's it. I would say, I like the idea of, uh, that Mr. Dwyer suggested of, uh, provisionally allowing it subject to the sign-off of all the appropriate departments we think you should contact.
These properties, do we know if all these properties are owned by the select board or some of them kinda, like is the Marshall Pond, is that parks or conservation?
It's on the, it's the town pound, so that's us.
That is.
Okay. All right, so then, and, and in front of the senior center, when it says the park, that's us too.
Veterans.
Veterans Memorial Park, okay.
So I'll give a couple of comments. First of all, uh, I know this is, uh, kind of a important day for you and clearly dressed up for it, so you did a really good job on your presentation today.
Thank you.
So I'll give you that feedback, that you certainly presented very well, gives me a lot of, I'm already really confident in the school system that we have here, but certainly a good example of, of the type of, uh, student that is coming out of there. Uh, you speak very well, you present very well, do a good job maintaining eye contact during the presentation, and also the presentation itself is, is very clear, good pictures, good graphics, so good job on this.
Thank you.
And, uh, I'm sure that your next ventures will go well as well. So, um, uh, you know, this, the, the projects that the seniors are doing, you know, obviously for, well, for not ob- it's not obvious, for me, it's very important, and it's something that I think we've all been hoping kinda comes back into the curriculum. Do you have, uh, which teacher do you have with this?
Uh, I currently have Mr. Harmon for, um, AP English, Literature.
Okay.
And composition.
All right, so I don't have any concerns about what you're trying to do. It sounds as if what, the goal is to kinda leave a mark, um, on the community, to give an opportunity for other students to get engaged, um, and, you know, that we see a lot of students around the center of town after school, and so this gives them an activity, something to do. Um, I think the locations you chose are pretty decent, so as far as like actual steps, I think we're mentioning names here and you're probably like, how do I do this? If tomorrow morning you reach out to, uh, Heather, the town manager's office and talk to Elaine, she'll help you out with the email addresses that you need to get in touch with.
Okay.
In that way, she'll provide you with the, um, with the chief's email address, she'll provide you with the email address for DPW, so chief of police, chief gamel, uh, you also need a DPW email address, and you wanna contact Elaine, and what's the best number for that?
Uh, nine seven eight, five eight two, four one, three zero, extension, one four four.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then that way would probably go, help you go a little smoother so that when you get home tonight, you're not like, who do I call, what do I talk to?
Yeah.
All right, and, uh, good luck on, uh, not, I don't really believe in luck, but I wish you, certainly wish you the best on your college adventures.
Thank you.
Um, you know, whether, whether, regardless of how that goes for you, cause you never know, you might get there and say, hey, I wanna, I don't know, go to Costa Rica and, and work in the mountains there and then decide, you know, but whatever adventure you do, I certainly hope that your memory of Lunenburg is good and fond, uh, and that will, hopefully, I'm trusting that we've done a really good job here, uh, with you. So thank you for coming forward to us, presenting this to us. I have no concerns or complaints and I'm gonna support this.
All right, I agree. I, I wanna just reiterate what he said about your presentation. At the beginning, I was gonna say, just breathe and slow down, because I know what it's like as an adult being the first time behind that, behind the lectern, looking up at the stage, I was like, oh my god, these are like the elected officials, but you did really well, and I think your presentation was well, so I won't go into everything that Mr. Jeffrey said, cause I felt the same way. Um, I wish you the best of luck with this, and furthermore, I wish you the best of luck in your endeavor to become a veterinarian.
Thank you, thank you.
And, uh, we'll, we'll hope to see this, let us know when, uh, you don't have to come back if you don't want to, but an email saying, okay, these are all placed, so we know, and we'll tell our friends to go to these, go to these things.
Awesome, awesome.
And for Mr. Jeffrey who doesn't believe in luck, obviously he's not a geocacher because some of that, some of that clearly is luck.
I mean, they're too young or too old.
Where is this thing? I've heard, I don't, I've never done it myself, but my friends who have, you know, they've searched for some and like, I know it's here somewhere, it's like hidden in rocks and everything like that, so, anyway.
Are you looking for a former boat master chair?
Uh, sure.
All right. Let me get your name, let me get your name, I know, let me get your name right here. Uh, is it Mc- McCormack?
Uh, yeah, John McCormack.
Okay. I moved to approve the request from John McCormack to install four- Geocaches in the center of Lunenburg on town property, as requested.
Contingent on approval.
Contingent upon approval, uh, from the Department of Public Works and the Chief of Police.
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? It is unanimous. Congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming prepared.
And congratulations on graduating.
Thank you, done that too.
Important day.
And my son actually watches these meetings, believe it or not, so he's already aware of this.
Palm spots already, board it up.
He's probably, he's probably at the stop sign right, right in the center now.
Thank you, John.
Great, thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Okay, report on FY twenty-two town manager goals.
All right, I'll just, um, we'll just read through them and the status.
I'm gonna let you decide how you want to approach it. You could read them or you can summarize them?
So, um, I've already talked about each of these at most of our meetings, you know, give updates when there are dates on each of the goals. So, uh, for the public, first goal was continuation of the goal to redevelop and reuse nine twenty-five mass av, and it was to work with the consultant, uh, to seek outside funding sources that would result in remediation of the site. So over the course of the year, I worked, uh, continued to work with our consultant, Joe McLaughlin from the Beta Group, and mass development and seeking any source of funding. Everyone was very, um, uh, supportive of this project, and everyone wants to see it funded and, uh, get that site cleaned up and revitalized. Um, so ultimately, Joe and I were able to connect with someone from EPA and, um, we kept, um, corresponding with them, and finally that the federal infrastructure bill passed and there was a, a lot of money available to the EPA for, uh, targeted brownfields, um, assessment work. So this will, and they, um, essentially promised us this funding. They said we're on the li- the list for the funding, so we submitted our application and we expect to hear this summer on the funding. So, um, I feel, um, very confident that we're close to the finish line on this and that this will get us, uh, that work will, um, it will be headed by the EPA and their people to, um, remove the underground tanks, uh, limited soil contamination removal, uh, so that will get it to that point, and then it will make us available for future funding as well, getting it to that point. So all good news on that front.
Can you remind me about possession of the property? I know we've talked about this.
Yes, that was the next action. So the, uh, second action to that goal was, um, depending on the results, the steps under action one, um, that we are not a potentially liable party, that we would, um, work with town council and tax title attorney to foreclose. And so, when we met last with Joe McLaughlin from Beta Group, and with the support of our EPA person, that this is the best course of action, is to take this property, and that because we've done all these steps of environmental site assessments that have not indicated any hazard, imminent hazard determination, that we would not be liable to that effect. So, we are, and I have already notified the tax collector to notify our tax title attorney to foreclose on the property. So, that's moving forward.
Thank you.
The second goal was for facilities management and maintenance, and the, this was to look at creating an independent facilities department, and improve our long-term and short-term maintenance of town facilities, and the action step for that was to look at the organizational structure, and follow the process through the town charter to create a independent department per the town charter process. So, being, just occurred Saturday, and it was approved at town meeting, so that whole process was reviewed, and as far as the organizational structure, and then followed the process with the town charter by holding a public hearing, and giving proper notice, receiving comments, presenting the administrative organization plan to the town to approve or disapprove. And so, as everyone knows, that's on the board, and the public listening, that did pass at town meeting for that position, and for that plan. So, after the 60 days as per the town charter, then it would be able to move forward with that. So, I'll be working with the Assistant Town Manager on next steps for that. The third goal was to establish a means-tested senior citizen property tax exemption, and that first action step was to research different models that other towns are utilizing for such programs, and work with the Finance Director and Principal Assessor, and looking at the financial impact and implementing a reduced residential tax rate for seniors. So, I had previously provided the board Wakefield's Home Rule Charter petition for senior discount program, and we engaged with the Finance Director and Principal Assessor, and Chairman Alonso, and Select Board member Lou Franco, and the Finance Director, and the Principal Assessor, and I met about a month ago, and from that meeting, we reported, or we reported back to the board about what we discussed at that meeting, the next steps, the Principal Assessor was going to do a lot of legwork on looking about what's the scope of how many seniors would be affected, given number of years that they lived in town, and then we're gonna drill down on that information. So, he has provided an update to us on, with some additional information, so we need to set up our next meeting, which I assume would be in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, as soon as possible. We should really get this going.
And the second action step is ongoing, because that is where we're at with that goal. So, I would say this goal would be continued until next fiscal year.
Any questions for the Town Manager regarding the goals? All of us met with her about these goals and the evaluation anyway, but just leave questions.
No questions.
Thank you very much. Those are excellent progress. Number three, the review of, that is going to be pushed back a week, because I didn't get all the reviews until yesterday afternoon. So, I am going to be doing them in the coming week, and we'll just be doing the two-week schedule, starting next Tuesday, and then the following Tuesday.
Thank you for not throwing me under the bus, but I'll throw myself under the bus.
I'm not, okay. I wasn't looking to point fingers.
No, you didn't, you didn't.
You just beat me to it.
Yeah, it was me. I apologize, I apologize, you guys.
Discussion on ARPA spending.
So, the reason I had this on tonight's agenda was because last week, John Hoag, he runs a shelter out of Lemonster, a nonprofit shelter location for homeless families, and he had reached out to, they're trying to fundraise for a large project for additional housing related to that organization, and is seeking funding through Towns ARPA funding for the towns that are, so Lemonster, Fitchburg, Lunenburg, so, but he was supposed to send me something as well, which I didn't receive anything.
The first thing I want to do is, what is his proposal? So, if we don't have a proposal, it's not terribly much to discuss.
So, that's why it's on tonight's, but I don't have any additional information from him.
Well, we'll look for more information.
But that will be a discussion that I foresee almost every meeting we'll be having about ARPA until we finalize our ARPA spending plan.
And that deadline for ARPA is when?
We have to commit the funds by the December 31st of 2024, and we have to fully expend them by 26th December 31st.
So, it's not imminent, but we don't want to-
Yes, I just want to say-
We don't want to pace ourselves too much, either.
No, especially with construction projects, given that we're going to be competing with every other town for engineering, architect work, and contractors, that's really not a long time span.
Okay. Okay, next agenda item, fourth quarter fiscal year '22 water commitment in the amount The perennial thing, this is the Water Department, not to be confused with the Water District. The town has, like, what, five or ten?
Seven, I think.
Yes, under 10 people that are in our Water Department, but they actually get their water from outside of the Water District. Usually, I think it's from Lemonster, but, okay, so, do I have, anybody that want to discuss this, or otherwise, I'll entertain a motion about the water commitments?
I move to approve the third quarter water commitment-
Fourth quarter.
Fourth quarter water commitment of $11,630.73.
I have a second.
Second.
Well, any discussion? All's in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? There you go. No minutes.
Can I sign in blue?
Sure.
Do you have a blank?
I don't know why I didn't offer, I didn't know why I didn't offer it to you.
Yeah, you didn't.
Yeah, I prefer blue.
You can sign with blue. Just don't sign with, like, green or violet. Okay, pay warrants, payroll warrant in the amount of $951,234.74. Accounts payable, oh, that's a big one. What loan are we paying off, or what bonds are we paying off?
I didn't look through the warrant yet, it's just-
Now I have to know. Usually, big ones like this are- Okay, accounts payable in the amount of $2,115,570.04. And lastly, payroll deduction warrant in the amount of $607,055.89. Any action items? Sorry, actually, I have two action items. Number one is, it was brought to our attention, and we all got a reminder today of a previous email from the Town Manager about this, that we know that the pavement management plan on the town website is out of date, and so, we will be working, when the DPW Director comes on board, to update that, so we are aware of that. And the other thing is, for those people who are, who have contacted us about the removal of the tree, when we put the old Christmas tree in the lot in front of the village, to allow the sidewalks, and we said we would reach out to find another location for a memorial tree, we have not forgotten that, but again, devoid, absent a DPW Director, we've been worrying about keeping streets paved and everything, so we have not forgotten it, we will get to you, and we will fulfill our promise of finding another location for another tree. So, I just wanted those two things to be said, so people did not think they were forgotten. Anybody else have any action items?
I have a question, just, yeah, yes. Last, at our last meeting, we updated our sign policy to include the election day exemption, and I know that we sent it over to the school committee just for them to confirm it. I don't know if they've met since then, but I just wanted to ask if they've responded or anything.
Um, I don't know if that was sent yet.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll have to check.
All right. That's it.
I also get told from someone on my, on my leaving town meeting, that we referenced that this is in the town's right-of-way, but they said 2A is a state road, so it's really the state's right-of-way, and I indicated to them, I understood the difference, and we, obviously, was, put there an arrow, we can always adjust it, but we wanted to have something in place that at least allowed for election signs. If it's not fully accurate, then we can make it accurate, but I'd rather have that than not have any, any bylaw that says you can put election signs out, so. Any other action items? Committee reports, Mr. Dwyer?
I have none. There is a meeting of the MJTC, Montezuma Joint Transportation Committee tomorrow, I believe it's at 2:30. I'm unable to attend, so if anybody wants to attend.
I think I want to be at a groundbreaking that is equally important to you, I think you said, that you wished you could be at. Mr. Franco?
I have none this week.
Mr. Jeffries?
I just have some updates, that the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee will be meeting next Monday at 6:00 PM via Zoom. That request went out earlier, and so I see Mrs. Skilburn bringing here, if you can give me your email address after the meeting, I'll CC you on those as well. We also have a library meeting on, coming up on Thursday, May the 19th, and that meeting will happen at 6:45 at the library. And then also Memorial Day Committee, so we have a Memorial Day Committee meeting this Thursday at 6:00 PM, should be a brief meeting via Zoom, and then Memorial Day Services will happen on Memorial Day itself at 10:00 AM. And-
At?
At the Veterans Memorial Park. And if I can just go back to kind of an action item, someone, I was, I received a message during the meeting that the, although we appoint the pound, Town Pound Manager, even though no one actually uses it anymore, that the Town Pound is technically Parks property.
It's what?
Parks. It's not Parks property.
So, we should make sure that we get their permission?
Correct.
I'm assuming somebody who sent that to you was from the park?
Correct.
All right, so then they know about, so, okay. The Town Pound is on the Parks Commission?
Yeah.
Because it's probably part of the larger Marshall Park, I'm guessing.
I know, you wouldn't think so.
And I have no committee reports either. Any old business? No. So, upcoming meetings, we have a meeting next Tuesday, and then the following Tuesday, that will be our last meeting of the month, May 24th. The APDC hearing for the Ritter Building alterations is May 19th, which is next week.
Any of us need to be there for that?
No, you don't have to be there, you can be there, but not required. And, and of course, as the Town Manager said, the annual town election is May 21st, that Saturday, polls are from seven to five? Seven to five, I believe.
Seven to five, yeah.
Seven to five. Because the amount of elections I've been involved in, I remember. Okay, any final public comment from the public? Anybody raising their hand?
No.
No. Any final comment from the board?
I have none.
Just an announcement that tomorrow, from 8:00 to 11:00, there'll be a pancake breakfast at the Eagle House Senior Center.
I got to ask you to put those at the beginning, because I don't think people make it to the end for their breakfast.
Yeah, well, then, but here's the thing, sometimes I don't get the message. I have a secret little elephant, and it sends me a message.
So, the pancake, your pancake, your fairy pancake?
Yes, so I didn't know at the beginning of the meeting.
Nice. All right, seeing the agenda completed, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will, I will move to adjourn.
Check it.
I'm assuming no discussions, all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, good night, everyone, we'll see you next week. Until then, take care of yourselves, take care of each other. Good night.
Recording stopped.